Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. So, I think we are at the point where we're going with continued council questions. Actually, before we do that, I did see one person in the public that wanted to give additional public comments, so Paul Buschow, why don't you come on up?
Thank you, Paul Buschow, Brisbane resident. Yeah, I was trying to get everything into my five minutes so I could share everything that I had for you. When we talk about public facilities and services, I was thinking about regional facilities and services. I was thinking that if we could annex the property to San Francisco so they can create the housing on the site, that we in turn could... I believe that UPC would be open to the possibilities to allow Recology to expand because the green waste is a huge issue when we talk about regional impacts. Recology has to run their green waste to Fairfield, and South City Scavenger has to run their green waste either to Santa Rosa or Gilroy. You know, if Recology was allowed to expand and have their composting like they want to do, I'm sure they would be able to take South City Scavengers' green waste, eliminating truck trips to Santa Rosa, Gilroy, and Fairfield. So, that's a big deal. If we could focus on that, which would have regional impacts, as well as the renewable energy on the Baylands site. You know, I think this whole issue with the housing has convoluted the whole Baylands issue because of its demands on this community and resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, Clara Johnson?
Your attorney, Susan and I, I apologize, I don't know Susan's last name, I don't mean to be disrespectful.
Allison. Allison.
Alton?
Susan's the remediation person, yes.
Alton. Ms. Alton made a comment just a few minutes ago in which she said, "We're not, we aren't required to have the full water agreement in place because we haven't proposed anything to be built." And that's, as a member of the public, that's what many of us have been trying to say to you five for quite a long time, that I know this is a programmatic EIR, I know the difference, I understand that, but everyone needs to understand that you're asking us to trust you. Just trust us. You know, we got a concept here, and it has these maximum limits of how it's going to impact, that isn't enough information. It's not enough information for the SFPUC or the MID, it's not enough information for anyone. You've also got mitigations that depend on the actions of other people and other entities. That's absurd. You cannot say that you're going to mitigate something and you don't know whether or not the other party's going to agree to it, in the same way that another party who has a water district is going to agree to something and they don't understand what the heck it is you want. And it's kind of like, you really, please, think about whether the mumbo jumbo of SEQA or jargon is one thing, but it's also really important to be what was called practical. If you don't know what the heck you're doing, don't do it. Turn it down. Call it inadequate. You know, there's a lot of work that's gone into this thing, but it's a lot of work that sometimes tries to illuminate and the rest of the time tries to obfuscate. And the obfuscation has been very difficult for people to deal with, and you folks are the ones who've had to take the brunt, because we're frustrated and we elected you guys. So, I hope you'll just think about that and think about, you know, it's a kind of a pig in a poach sort of a thing. You don't know what you're going to get here, and unless you demand more information, say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Clara. Deb Horn?
Thank you, just Deb Horn following up on what Clara's saying is, you know, you all are deliberating, do we want to go ahead with this big development, which is pretty specific? It's 4,400 homes, it's lots of different pieces, and yet, there really isn't any practical assurances that we're going to have the transportation, we had a study, or that we're going to have the water, or that we're going to have the financial wherewithal to be able to supply city services. So it is, I think Clara was saying, it's frustrating, it's probably frustrating for you as well as you're trying to wrap your arms around and understand and be able to deliberate and approve a specific development, it's pretty specific what they're asking for, but the assurances that we're going to have all of the pieces that come together to make it possible are all very conceptual and not grounded and not practical. So I think, again, you know, I think we're all frustrated with that, and thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Deb. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Okay. So, we'll turn it back now to council questions. Do we want to close the public comment period, or?
You can leave it open if you like, just for a while.
Sure. So, I think, I'll start with Cliff, I think he said you had some questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Allison, can you just kind of help us understand the process? So, you know, in order to have been able to move forward to create this EIR, the project had to show that there was potentially this required amount of water to do development. And so, in order to do that, the term sheet was, term sheet approach agreement with Oakdale Water District was, Irrigation District was created. And so that, again, has been stated, you know, before, that it's not a binding agreement, it's just acknowledgement that here is this potential water source. And then, you know, if you can just kind of, a little bit repeat what you had said before in regards to how you reach out to the various stakeholders like MID in regards to creating this type of EIR?
Well, the EIR process here started when UPC submitted an application for development on the Baylands. And without going back over all the various iterations and when it started, you know, where we are now is, they've submitted a specific plan application, and there's also some general plan amendments that they've included, and there is another plan that was proposed as well. So essentially, you have an EIR that is analyzing a specific plan application from the developer that proposes, you know, the 4,000-plus units of housing. And that basically meets the definition of project under the Water Code and required preparation of a water supply assessment. And as Lloyd has already said, basically, the question when you're doing a water supply assessment is, will the water supplier's total projected water supplies available during normal, single dry, and multiple dry water years during a 20-year projection meet the projected water demand of the proposed project? So you're basically saying, is there enough supply to meet the demand of this project? And so there's a water supply assessment that's included in the EIR that basically looks at water supply. And I think as we all understand, you know, there is not enough water supply available from SFPUC to supply potentially even what Brisbane needs, although I don't want to speak to that, but more so this development that's been proposed. So, my understanding is that, you know, driven by the developers, you said, okay, you have to figure out a water supply. And so this term sheet was negotiated with OID. And I understand that OID's position is that, you know, assumptions were made, reasonable assumptions, that there is sufficient water in their system based on their water rights to provide the city with up to 2,400 acre feet, of course, may not need all that, but that's what you'd need if you wanted to approve the DSP.
And taking out of that 41,000 acre feet per year that they already have?
Right.
That they've, you know, had negotiated with other entities to sell that water?
That is my understanding, yes. And so what the EIR does is it looks at the impacts of moving water from OID to Brisbane at a programmatic level. So we don't know exactly how it would move, we don't know exactly how much water would be, but it basically looks at what would be the impacts, the physical impacts on the river, and it looks at the Stanislaus River, and it looks also at the water moving from Hetch Hetchy, and as I think was already mentioned, there's an impact to the Meadows, and the EIR looks at that. So basically, it's sort of the general plan, specific plan, you know, planning level approval, the EIR looks at the impacts of moving this water, okay? As I think we all understand, the water supply agreement is discussed in the EIR. The EIR is required by SEQA, looks at the whole of the actions, so it looks at all the actions the city would need to take. But as much as I understand the frustration that people have about specificity, you can't analyze things when you don't know what they are. And SEQA doesn't require you to make up a hypothetical situation and analyze it, because that doesn't serve a purpose. The purpose of SEQA is so that everybody understands the environmental impacts and that decision-makers can make informed decisions. So, you have to analyze everything that you know, you make reasonable assumptions, but SEQA doesn't require you to say, let's just make up a hypothetical site-specific development project, and, you know, figure out a water supply agreement that would meet that, and then analyze that water supply agreement, require the developer to buy water for something that's not approved yet.
Because then you would bind different entities.
Right.
Without really having a plan that's been approved.
Right. So, you know, as much as I understand, you know, the desire for knowledge, you know, that's the reason there's sort of a tiered process in land use, where you start with your general plan, what does the city want to see on the Baylands, what kinds of development? You know, and then you move forward with that, you have an EIR that studies that, and then you move to a specific plan, maybe you want to consider what the developer has proposed, maybe you want to do something else. And then after that comes site-specific development, where you're actually building things. And that's when you need an assured water supply. So, you know, I know there's been some disagreement about how staff has here, has been in contact with staff at MID, I think John and Randy outlined that process pretty clearly, but, you know, as SEQA requires, you know, an NOP was provided, the notice of preparation, that alerts agencies, hey, we're preparing an EIR, this is the project description, these are the impacts that we foresee. Comment, tell us what you think should be an EIR. Then, you know, that provides the ability for the city to kind of scope out the EIR, decide what should be analyzed, everybody's got an opportunity to comment. And then, at that point, a draft EIR is prepared, as we all know, it circulated, this EIR was circulated for a particularly long period of time, over 200 days, which is, you know, a very long comment period. And then agencies all have an opportunity to write comment letters, all of the comment letters were responded to. But at this point, you know, the water supply agreement is conceptual in nature, and I think that's very clear in the EIR, although the EIR does outline how we sort of foresee water moving. But to get into the kind of detail of exactly how is it going to move, as Lloyd made clear, that's going to really depend on how much water ends up being needed, and we simply don't know that. So, we can't analyze exactly where the water's going to go, there'd be no way to do that analysis. If we want to or not, it's simply not possible yet.
Sure.
It will be if the city decides to approve and move forward with development, and prior to approving a water supply agreement, you would be required to adopt a SEQA document. So, you would be fully informed of all of the impacts of a proposed water supply agreement. You cannot approve it until you do a SEQA document, because it's a project. So, you know...
There are a lot of steps.
There are many steps. And this is just the first. So, you know, this EIR tells you everything that we know now, and tries to walk through all the steps and, you know, reasonably foreseeable impacts, but you can't foresee the unforeseeable. So, that's sort of the limits of SEQA, the outer limits, which is why, you know, you have this sort of tiered process where you kind of walk down and kind of narrow your analysis and focus it more and more as you get closer to a development that will actually put buildings on the ground.
Sure. So then, you know, just going all the way down the line, you eventually get to that project-specific EIR, and then that's when you would go into that agreement.
Right.
With the different entities. And you want to comment anymore about that to Lloyd, or Allison's got it dialed in?
I think the other thing I want to add is, when we looked at the comments that came in on the draft EIR, both MID and SFPUC raised very similar issues regarding what regime is going to be used to move that water through the systems. And the solution that the EIR came up with was a project-specific EIR on the water supply plan. How do you actually get that 2,400 acre feet from OID system ultimately to Brisbane? I think the other thing that's key here is, the Planning Commission's recommendation in front of you is for denial of the specific plan. So this argument about all that we've discussed in relation to the water supply assessment, how water physically moves, water supply agreements are all tied to a specific plan that the Planning Commission has recommended be denied, and the process they have set up, as I mentioned during the original presentation, is first deal at the specific plan level, what is the level of development that Brisbane wishes to see?
General plan level.
At the general plan level, sorry. What is the level of development that the city wishes to see at a general plan level for the Baylands? Then we can go through the issues related to how water supply gets moved, does that term sheet work, can in fact that water get through the system, and then a specific plan would be considered. That's the recommendation in front of you. I think that addresses, it does definitely address the issues that SFPUC raised in their letters, and it ought to solve the issues that MID is raising, because recommendations, let's not get into the water supply mechanics until we know what we're providing water supply for.
Yeah. You know, I agree with you, Clark, that staff and MID should get together and just kind of work out whatever, you know, misunderstandings might be out there, but I think, you know, we've been pretty clear about, you know, how we've conducted our protocol and...
Absolutely.
I don't see any reason why, you know, our city and your district can't work together.
And that's fine, but I would say that MID doesn't really have anything to go over there and work out. I mean, my real request is that to the extent you have a plan, to propose it to the board so that they can come up with some sort of position. Like, I'm not authorized to walk through a water transfer with them.
No, I mean, what I mean is that, you know, staff has, you know, and our attorney has laid out, you know, what is the proper protocol, and, you know, we're nowhere near having any kind of agreement, it's just really just having good lines of communication, I think, that would be helpful.
Sure, that's great.
All right, thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other follow-up questions?
So, just to synthesize, what I'm understanding is that we're just early in the process right now in terms of, you know, nailing down a water agreement. So once we, once the council kind of decides what they'd like to see out on the Baylands at that point, then that will come to MID's board for more thorough comment. So, that didn't necessarily need to happen as of yet, but as we're getting closer to that time when we do need water agreement in place, then we would bring that to their board, and then we would have more dialogue about how is this going to work? Is that correct?
Well, as the water, the water supply agreement that's sort of been outlined in this EIR, if that were the water supply agreement that the city decided to move forward with, yes, of course, you would need to involve all of the stakeholders.
It's just not time yet.
Right.
I see. From our perspective.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other council questions for follow-up after the public comment period? No? Okay, all right, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close public hearing, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, moving on to item five, mayor council matters, item A, city council schedule.
Okay, so this is actually the schedule as it relates to your Baylands hearing schedule. So the next meeting would be March 16th, that will be on other environmental issues, biological resources, cultural resources, geology, soils, seismicity, hydrology, recreation, energy and related policies. And then we are proposing a meeting in April, that would be April 25th, which I believe is a Tuesday. The mayor's not available on May 20th, or April 20th, excuse me, so there would be no April 20th meeting, there'd be an April 25th meeting. And then you'd come back on May 4th to have a presentation on land use, planning and related policy issues. The June meeting, which would be June 15th, would be the applicant and community group presentations, and then after that you will start your council deliberations.
Okay, does that schedule work for everybody?
I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
Just about overall scheduling, Baylands and then normal meetings. So, I know a while back we kind of discussed this briefly, but are we intending to have a break in August as we have done traditionally, or are we planning to run through deliberations all the way until we finish, which may not allow for that typical break that occurs in August?
Well, ultimately, that's your decision. The way this is set up right now, I think you would start your deliberations in June. You know, it's kind of a little bit of a guesstimate in terms of how many meetings, but let's say it took three meetings, that would be something you could probably accomplish in the month of July, and you could have the August recess.
Because I think it's important for us to start planning now whether we intend to observe that month off, or whether we want to work through it, because I know you, like your kids are off and a lot of times you go on vacation.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
So I think it's important for us to plan, because if people are relying on that time and going to be making travel arrangements, we don't want to find out last minute that, in fact, we, I'm cool either way, it's just good for me to schedule to know what we want to do.
And I think actually, in the past, we haven't taken all of August off, what we've done is had one meeting in July and one meeting in August.
Okay.
We had a month that was just straddled both, you had a month in time, but it's straddled.
It was between two, so I guess, I see. So maybe it was between August and September?
Right. What I could do for you, if this would help, would be bring back maybe even on Thursday night, a proposed deliberation schedule, and then you could take a look at that, and, you know, if you scheduled basically one meeting a week through the middle of July, June through July, that would give you potentially six dates, you know, presumably, well, hopefully you wouldn't need them all, but if you did, you know, they'd be there.
One meeting a week?
Well, I'm just saying...
Yeah, no, I think that would be good to get that, because I know, I have been, actually just this week, was looking at the schedule for July, because I know I'm going to be traveling, and I wanted to look at, figure out when we were going to have those Baylands meetings, so...
You could maybe, I mean, we had discussion earlier in this whole process about establishing kind of a meeting schedule, but then kind of a alternative, you know, dates that you would use if needed. So maybe you could have a meeting every two weeks, but then if you felt like you needed to fill in another meeting, you'd have these other dates that you could go to. That's, you know, another approach.
Well, I just, either way, I think we should iron it out, because also, to my knowledge, June is a five-month, a five-Thursday month. So you end up with two weeks or so, a little bit more than that at the end of the month. So, I was thinking about being out of town at that time, but I won't. I just can't lot, like, it may be a situation where we can't decide last minute to then, oh, let's just use this extra month because extra Thursday in June, because I may have already made plans. So I just don't want to, we should really discuss it.
Sure. So if you've already made any travel plans, or if you're planning on it, why don't you email Clay with your schedule, and he can, using those dates, put together a proposed schedule for us to consider at our...
Yeah, vacation schedules are always good to know that we can try to figure something else around.
Okay. I haven't planned anything, I want to stay flexible, and I said, you know, in the beginning of this process, that I would try my best to make sure that we could get this done in a timely manner, you know, when we kind of discussed this in the very beginning about the schedule. So I, you know, want to keep my word, I just don't want to, in my mind, think that we're not going to have a meeting and then.
We are.
So I don't want to last minute have you guys all shift. So, I'll talk about the dates with Clay, but, you know, if it really doesn't work out and we really need that time, I'm totally fine, since I haven't booked anything, I just kind of need to know soon.
Sure. Okay, but just, we want to make sure April 25th works for everybody?
Works for me.
Yeah.
I didn't bring my computer in with me, but I think that our March 16th meeting, with the amount of items on it, is going to be really difficult to try to get through all those topics on the March 16th meeting.
How many pages of material is that, do you know?
Oh, don't worry.
How does that compare to what we've seen so far?
Let me, let me... I mean, it'll be, those were not, for the most part, considered terribly controversial other than maybe the windsurfing issue, that's why we kind of grouped them, but, you know, again, there is a number of topics and certain interest groups and individuals I'm sure will have interest in discussing them, so...
I do have to say, I have to leave at 10:30 that night, like, on the dock, I have to catch a flight.
It just seems very ambitious to have those issues, because I know energy, geology, and hydrology are all going to be, you know, very interested, one would assume, from the public.
Sure.
So, I just would hate to see us start getting, falling behind here, because our April, if we're moving the April meeting to the 25th, and then having another meeting on the 4th, we're starting to get for the land use.
Well, I think, I'd be comfortable with keeping it and then seeing how far we get, like we did with, you know, we had to split up one of the meetings so far.
So, what's the purpose why we're not meeting the third week of April? Why is that?
I think the mayor had a con...
It's my children's spring break and I'll be out of town.
So what day are we meeting?
Tuesday, the 25th?
We're moving from the 20th to the 25th.
April 25th?
Mm-hmm.
Which is a Tuesday.
A Tuesday.
I'm looking at the calendar, yeah.
I'm not, I was repeating it for my benefit.
I'm fine to see how far we get on that day, I just want the council to know that, like, I will walk out at 10:30, because heck, can't miss a flight, so, and I don't want it to be awkward, like, if you guys are all still talking and I just say goodbye, I think the public might not understand what's going on.
Sure. Well, I think it's important, maybe if you announce that at the beginning of the meeting, just so people who are there know that you have to leave. But, you know, it's 10 o'clock right now, so I think, you know, it's, and we will have a study session beforehand, so...
I'm going to be out of town on the 25th, I won't be back till the 26th.
Of April?
April, yeah.
You want to move it to the 26th?
I'm available on the 26th, the 27th unfortunately, I have a...
I thought we were going to schedule the library arts submission review on the 26th.
Oh, you're right, I do have that.
Because I know there was just, like, one day we could do it.
Unless we can.
What time is that?
Start, what, at 8? No, well, but they have the 6 o'clock.
What about the 27th? I mean, I have, I do have a peninsula...
They want to start...
We can't do the 26th?
Well, we have, the subcommittee that's reviewing the public art for the library is conducting interviews starting at 4 o'clock, and that's probably going to last...
Until, like, 8.
Several hours.
Move that meeting to a different day.
Well, we determined, that was actually the only day that we could do it and still kind of try and be on...
We do have all the artists...
Could we do it on the 27th? Yeah, I know you have the peninsula...
I, I, I've missed those in the past, you know, because of... I, I, I've missed those in the past, you know, in, because of baylands meetings, so if I have to miss it, I'll miss it.
John, that's a, John, that's a planning commission meeting night, the 20th? We could, we'll, we'll have to reschedule planning commission, but we could do that.
Maybe they could do the, maybe they could do Tuesday. We could switch it, maybe?
Maybe.
Okay. So April 27th, then?
27th.
That works for me.
That I could do.
I just, the thing that I get concerned about is, like, a week like this, where a meeting was moved, it's now one day in between, there's only one day in between the next meeting. So I feel like, I do topics one at a time, so I'm finished with this. Now I'm moving on to the next agenda. I just, my concern is in the future that we're going to start pushing meetings, and then it'll get too close to a regular scheduled meeting.
Could we switch the April 6th council meeting and make that a baylands meeting, to space it out more?
And then when?
And have the regular council meeting on the 27th?
Um.
Because the one before that is March 16th. So it...
Yeah, I agree. I think that would be better, because then May 4th is, you know, a pretty substantial meeting, right? Because we're going to be dealing.
We have to have enough time to, like, prepare. My mind, I can't, like, digest big issues like that. I have to finish one and then move to the next one.
It would be baylands.
Yeah, I mean, well, I...
And then April 27th will be?
Okay.
Can you repeat that, just so I can put it in my calendar correctly?
We've got April 6th as baylands, which would then be the economics, development, feasibility, municipal cost revenue and related policies. All this assumes that we can get the consultants here, which hopefully we can. April 27th then would be a regular, just regular city council meeting, and then May 4th would be, would be back to the baylands.
Okay.
April 27th is the council meeting. Okay.
Sorry, everybody's busy on their devices.
Done.
And the study session on the 6th will start at 6:00 PM?
Yeah. It'll work.
Okay. Let me just update my calendar. April 6th. Okay. Great. All right. So...
Will you send me a copy of the changes, please?
Yeah, and then we'll, I'll, I'll bring them back Thursday night, just so that we can, you can look at them with fresh eyes.
It's just really hard to have back-to-back meetings.
No, this will eliminate that, then. Yeah.
Wow.
I mean, back-to-back baylands.
Your, your goal is to have an August recess, then? If, if, if things can work out that way?
I think we got to play it by ear, but yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to have some time in August.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, I'll email you the dates for my schedule. I know the end of July, the first week of August, I'll be out of town, and then around the 4th of July.
I don't like traveling in summer.
I may be traveling for about a week.
It's busy. I just don't like it, so I don't usually make summer plans.
Oh, you mean the planning commission?
Yeah.
I'm not a high-season girl.
Well, those of us with children are kind of, you know, stuck on the summer schedule, so. Okay. So we'll move on to written communications. Item A, Acknowledge receipt of written communication regarding the Brisbane Baylands project. So I'd like to acknowledge that between February 16th and February 28th, we received three pieces of correspondence. We received one letter from Barbara Evil on February 17th. We received a second letter from Barbara Evil on February 21st, and we received a letter from the Modesto Irrigation District on February 28th.
All right. You know, if I may, Madam Mayor, you know, we also received a letter from the city attorney, you know, and, you know, regarding, you know, comments and, you know, how we should, you know, potentially do our deliberations and whatever, you know, based upon the comments that I made at the previous meeting. I just want to just let everybody know that, you know, I had reached out to Michael prior to that meeting. And the reason that I did was because I felt like I was being handcuffed on the things that I could say to the public, you know, you know, addressing, you know, the sustainability framework in regards to the items that are before us. And, you know, I wanted, again, you know, the public to know where I stand on these issues, and that I'm listening to them, and I, you know, I like that exchange. So, you know, and when I had asked to speak before the public, you know, I wasn't addressing all of you, right? To me, that, if I'm addressing you, then that's, that's deliberations, and not to say that we couldn't do that prior to deliberations, we, we could talk about it if we wanted to, but that hasn't, that's not what we have decided. So that's why I made my comments to the public rather than to all of you. But I did reach out to Michael just to make sure that I wasn't breaking the rules, and basically, the only thing, as long as I don't make an opinion on the plans that are before us, I'm not judging, I'm just, you know, giving you my thoughts, or the public my thoughts, on the items that we are, you know, that are before us, that's okay. So just wanted to clarify that.
I think that was important, that you said that, Cliff, because I just feel like up until now, we've kind of had a traditional way that we've been, that we've been doing the hearings. So when you started addressing the public, to me, I was like, what is this? This is not, this, it wasn't just, wasn't how we've typically been, typically been, been doing it. And from what I gathered from Michael's email is that it might be beneficial for us to lay some groundwork with each other about how we would like to have the hearings go. That way, none of us are caught off guard. And, and I, what he did say is oftentimes, it can be a fine line, and a lot of times we're savvy enough to know, but maybe the public might not be. And so, to just use best judgment, which I'm not saying you didn't do that, I just think it is good for us to kind of have a discussion about how we would like the hearings to go, so we're kind of all on the same page, and we know what's, we can expect, you know, what's coming. And that way, you know, for me, hey, I might, I might start responding to things, too, but in my opinion, that was something that we weren't doing. So it's good for us to kind of all be on the same page. That way, if we'd like to say something, we can come prepared with a little comment that's directed towards the public.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I think, you know, we all come at this from different perspectives, and I think, you know, each council member should be okay with, you know, taking in the information and then putting it back out there. I don't, I mean, I, I think, you know, as long as we have those, you know, we've agreed to the guidelines that have been set forth, I think that that is appropriate. But making comments to the public about the things that we're talking about and how you want to do it, I think it should be up to the council member, how they want to express their, their points of view on that particular item. And if, you know, I mean, if other council members want to do it, that's great, and if other council members don't want to do it, I think that's fine, too.
I just know that that's what Michael recommended, that it might be beneficial for us to talk about, about the structure. But if that's something that you're really passionate about, you know, you may just do what you want to do anyway. You know, I can't, I can't keep you from speaking, and that's not what I want to do. It just caught me off guard, and that, you just, that's never happened before, so it's good for me to at least know what to expect. So I'm not caught off guard.
Yeah, no, that's good. And, you know, I probably would have...
I didn't realize you talked to Michael at all.
Oh, yeah. No, and I, anyways, yes.
Yeah, I, I didn't know either, and it seemed awkward. And so I thought that we had, as a group, when we had talked about this, that we were going to, you know, ask questions, hear the public testimony, and then save our comments and our discussion for later. So again, it was something that was different, and I didn't know if we wanted to discuss how we were going to do this going forward as a group, or, because the city attorney's recommendation, while was not really set in stone, it did give somewhat direction, I felt.
Okay. Well, not to belabor the point, but I feel like if we're going to have a discussion, this should probably be an agendized item. But, you know, I think everyone's made their point, and we will get to those deliberations pretty soon on the calendar, so just hold your thoughts. And, you know, be mindful of, you know, what, I totally understand, Cliff, that you want to, you know, let the public know. I also feel that when the public knows, when you're communicating to the public, you know, we're listening, too.
Yeah, no, for sure.
It's a fine line.
It is a fine line.
So we will get to those deliberations in due time, and till then, we should adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. We are adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Aye, aye, Captain.